I will call a meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I am the Saints of America, here to recall our rich families, my nation, my God, the invisible, every tree and just.
I'd like to make a note, an executive session was held prior to this evening's meeting for legal matters. I would like to welcome everyone to our board meeting. This is where you can see how your local government works for you. This is where you can voice your concerns, complaints, and even share compliments of staff members or of departments that have helped you in your situation. County Township residents have some of the best folks working here at this township building. From our finance and codes department to our public works and wastewater crews. Our golf course staff and our community outreach department keep you informed and engaged. And to keep you safe, we have the top notch police force, fire department and our EMS staff. We also have some of the best volunteers who dedicate their time and efforts in helping to improve our township. Committees such as our park and rec, historical, planning, CTMA, civil service, zoning hearing board, and our newly formed sustainability task force. We are all here to build a stronger community and to help improve our quality of life throughout our township. I urge everyone to get involved in what matters. Join one of our committees that interests you or take the time to attend a township meeting like this evening. We always welcome your input and thoughts. Thank you. Hi, next on the agenda is citizens to be heard for agenda items only. Do I have any here in the township? I know hands raised. Oh, for agenda items, I assume it's for something else. Okay. And anybody from Zoom? All right, next on the agenda, township solicitor. Please camp.
So the first one is a discussion of medical marijuana ordinance. So I know that you might have had this on agenda before. And I've spoken to your manager and had some direction from both the manager as well as Ray, continuing to look into some of the issues and we'll come back with a draft for the board to consider in a future meeting.
Okay, thank you so much for continuing your work with this.
Sure. The second thing is a proposed motion to grant final plan approval, final land development approval for the Kia auto leasing. The name of the property owner is DMS Realty LP. Actually, the owner of the property is Open Hand Realty LLC. I believe the owner of the business is DMS Realty LP, but they operate as the Kia. This is at a 6.15 acre parcel. It's located at 2751 Lincoln Highway. The property is primarily vacant today. It's just a building foundation and pavement. There previously was a building that had been demolished on the property. The applicant seeks to redevelop this property for the 4,500 square feet building to be used for automobile leasing as that term is defined in township zoning ordinance. The property is in the TB1 Thorndale Village District where automobile leasing is a permitted use. Applicants submitted land development plans. They're dated April 7th, 2023, last November is June 27, 2024. Township consultants have reviewed those plans. And at the June 18th, 2024 planning commission meeting, the planning commission recommended the board grant the approval subject and completing the latest consultant review letters. So what I had before the board and was included in your packet is a motion to grant final approval of the plan. The waivers were actually already granted with the preliminary plan, so those are just being carried over. And then there are specific conditions of approval. Some of these are boilerplate, obviously comply with every provision of the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, the storm order ordinance, unless the waiver is granted, which there don't be two waivers through which it's granted. Comply with any comments from the CTMA consultant. Implement the landscaping plan. And I'm going to turn it over in a second to the applicant engineer and lawyer to explain to you what they've done as far as landscaping and the brick wall along the frontage, because that was a condition that was imposed with the preliminary plan. The fourth condition is also carried over. It's very specific about what types of vehicles are allowed to be on the property and that the sale of vehicles is not permitted from this property. This is strictly a leasing facility. They have to obtain all the approvals and the sewer capacity from the CTMA. They have to pay a fee in lieu of open space, the name of $3,847.50. They have to execute the standard development agreement, financial security agreement, storm and management agreement. They also have to, the plan proposes an offer of additional right of way along West Lincoln Highway. So if PennDOT doesn't want to accept that, there will be this perpetual offer that if in the future the township wants it, PennDOT wants it, we'll have the opportunity to have a wider right of way on that, in that location. They also are showing sidewalk. And I don't believe that the sidewalk is on their property. It's within the offer of additional right of way. So they're going to have to grant an easement agreement to the township to allow that sidewalk to be utilized for them. So that's a condition. Let's see, they have to park the inventory. All applicants shall only park new vehicle inventory for leasing in the front. All used vehicles offered for lease must be in the rear. That was carried over from the preliminary plan. They have to obtain all necessary outside agency approvals, which includes PennDOT, the NPDS permit and a DEP planning module approval. They also, the last condition which is new is applicant shall install site lighting in accordance with the plan and current ordinances for purposes of safety and security. If the township has any reason to believe that the lighting is not in compliance with the plan or the ordinances, then applicants shall cause the light output to be professionally measured to determine compliance with the plan and ordinances. And if necessary, take steps to bring lighting to compliance. So I'm going to turn it over to the applicant engineer council to walk you through this plan, to answer any questions and to talk about the site lighting.
Good evening. My name is Gina Gerber. I'm here on behalf of the applicant this evening. Mr. Sapala is not able to join us, but I can tell you that Joe Rosella probably knows more about this plan than any of us. So I will have him talk you through the high level of this plan. You all have seen this plan several times now. So we will not bore you with the details. I'm going to ask Mr. Rosella to focus primarily on the brick detail. That is something that is new with this final plan that you haven't seen yet. But just so the board understands, we have received the review letters. All of the items that are outstanding are right now are will comply items. The version of the plan that is recorded will be revised to reflect compliance with those review letters. So we have no issues with that. No problems with the conditions that Ms. Camp just ran through in terms of the resolution. Should the board be inclined to grant final land development approval, all of those conditions are perfectly acceptable to the applicant. As she indicated, this site is for automobile leasing. There's a very small building on this site. It's only 4,500 square feet. There is an abundance of parking in order to display the vehicles that are going to be available for lease on this site. It is currently compliant with the zoning ordinance. There is quite a bit of landscaping that is going in to provide some screening and buffering on this site as well. But with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Rosella to just walk you through the brick detail that you see on the latest version of the plan that's up right now.
Thank you. So as you recall from the preliminary plan approval, we agreed to install the wall along the frontage of the property. The plan picks the two details that are very similar to the wall that's common down on this side of Route 30, Lincoln Highway, excuse me, that's in front of the Wawa and in front of the Del Chevrolet. So it, there are two by two brick piers. It's a continuous wall. And then there's also a wall that's situated around the sign similar to what's out front of Del Chevrolet. And in front of the wall and behind the wall is landscaping and parallel to the street is the sidewalk. I know that was a concern that the commissioners had, so we incorporated that. It's been reviewed. And it's depicted on the plan. And I think if we, if you slide it over a little bit to the right, you'll be able to focus on the shade trees and other evergreen and deciduous shrubs that are behind the wall. And those shrubs and trees carry throughout the property. They actually exceed the requirements of the township landscape ordinance. And we've also focused on carrying that landscaping within the riparian buffer that's further to the north of the plan, behind the building and in the shaded area that goes around the building. So we expanded our landscaping material. With respect to the lighting, the lighting currently is compliant. It's LED, there are LED fixtures. The LED fixtures allow the intensity of the light to be adjusted. And we agreed that after the lights are energized and if it's determined that they're too intense, even though that they don't spill over on the property. But the concern of our applicant, of course, is security with the cars being there. But we have the ability to adjust them if necessary. Again, they're not out of compliance now, but part of the agreement was just to be able to correct them. As we indicated, all of our other permits with only one right now that's on its way is N.HOP. Today, we received our NPDS permit. We have our sewer taken care of. There was only two EDUs based upon the size of the building. The remaining comments in the review letter are primarily just house cleaning items, monumentation, some notes and just clarity on these. Everything else has been taken care of. We really did a lot through preliminary to get to final. So I think we're in a very good position. I'm sure the board act favorably to press and final. Happy to answer any questions. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any comments, questions?
I might have not followed it correctly. Just want to, you know, one of the concerns. I know you have control over making them dimmer. I would be more comfortable with it, the light actually spilling out into Lincoln Highway. It's, you know, we've had studies of it's darkening Lincoln Highway and it's dangerous for bicyclists.
The, if I could answer that, we do have the decorative lights that are along the highway. Those are just part of the highway program. They will light the sidewalk and spill out into the bike lane and provide some lighting that are outside of the lights that are just fired internally to the lighting campus. So you do get the benefit of those light providing that pedestrian, motorist, bicyclist lighting. So there is a little bit of spillover from it.
Thank you.
There are three lights there. I can, maybe it's easier if I point them out. So you have one, two, three lights. And we don't have very much frontage, so those lights really do a great job to provide not only the decorative to follow through with the Thorndale Village concept, but also provide that level of safety and security that we're looking for, especially for pedestrians. Yeah. Yeah, they're on the lighting plan, those light standards, in addition to the lights that are internal to the site.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And a question about the brick wall. How high is that?
It's 30 inches high and the piers are a little bit higher, but in visualizing what's out there, we're just following that detail. Now, the site, as you know, kind of slopes down, so they're at the top of the embankment, which will make it a little bit more prominent. And again, it's not very long in terms of lineal footage, but it pretty, except for the driveway entrance, it covers the whole frontage there.
Yeah, I think one of our concerns is just seeing a sea of cars and I believe this will help. Now, on the back end of the property, next to Casa Herrera, what type of boundary do we have there to prevent the lighting?
Yeah, so as you can see, that's parallel to the property line is a continuous row of a variety of deciduous and evergreen plants that will shield the lighting from the parking lot of the restaurant. But again, our site is lower than theirs by about two and a half feet. So we're a little bit buried, so you're not really seeing our lights as much as really what may be parked on those perpendicular spaces. But we do have a continuous row of material that creates a continuous buffer.
And the lights are on 24 hours for security for the vehicles?
Yeah, yes, they are.
Not that that's a problem. Brian Hoskins is always on.
Do you have a timeline as far as getting these approvals done for to starting the new business there, the leasing business?
Should we receive approval this evening with our permits in hand, we'd like to start implementing our construction. There's some site work that needs to be done. So, you know, as soon as everything's approved and the agreements are approved, we're ready to begin.
So again, your timeline upon approval would be six months, a year?
No, would be two weeks. Oh, up and running. I think the site work, if we start now, would be done sometime in the early winter, around maybe Thanksgiving, maybe into December. They'd like to get it done before the, you know, to close out the season here for the end of the year. So I think we can anticipate that that would be, we'd be up and running site work wise by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let me reach out to the residents here in the township building. Any questions on this project? No hands raised in the township building? Anybody in Zoom? And I do have one last question. The building itself, I know we have two bays set aside just for like auto detailing, car washing. It's not a, like a regular car wash where you have a pressure washer or whatnot.
No, I explained to everyone and it was explained more like, it's like a bucket wash. Like you would do your car at home and it's not thorough detailing, but just sprucing up the cars. So we're just using a hose and a bucket to clean the cars, but there isn't any mechanical equipment like you would have in a car, you know, in a more formal setting. It's just really more to create the detail of cars. And it's not, it's not a continuous requirement. It's just as the, you know, however the inventory comes in, most of the newer inventory, it's just really taking that protective film off the car. And then as the car is coming, you know, that would just require a wash, it would be that type of a hand washing.
Okay. I'm not, not sure if everybody here in the room knew that. I didn't attend the planning committee, but I believe that was. Okay. There's no further questions? We'll entertain a motion to approve the final land development application for DMS Realty. Have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, engineer.
Thank you, everybody.
Kristen, you're finished for this evening?
Thank you, Kristen.
Have a great night, Kristen.
Thank you.
Oh, hey Ross. Ross, haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah, a few days. Good to see you.
You too.
For, for tonight, both of the agendas under my category relate to this Spackman Davis Farmhouse roof. So we did receive three bids for that project. They were opened on July 11th. And the low bidder is Detwiler Roofing and their, their base bid was about 145,000. And their ad alternate number one was around 26,000, ad alternate number two around 12,000. So that was making their all told, the base bid with the alternates, 182,612. So that, that seems like a very good price. We were anticipating it to be a good bit higher. So we did, you know, do a reference check. We called a number of their references, got good reports about them. So we were satisfied. And so our recommendation is that the township award this contract for this Spackman Davis Farmhouse roof to the apparent low bidder, which is Detwiler Roofing for 182,612, which is the total of the base bid, ad alternate one and ad alternate two.
All I got to say is you can't beat that with a stick.
That was a nice surprise to open that one.
Oh my goodness, yes.
Can you, just for the people that are here and at home, can you explain what the ad alternate? Everybody knows what the roof is, but can you explain what the ad alternate one and two are?
Yes, so we broke out a couple of different options so that the township could elect to accept those or not. And so the first one is to remove and replace the porch flooring and the structure of the flooring on the southern main porch of the building. We felt like that would definitely be a good benefit to the use of the property if it could be afforded. And then in conjunction with that would be some repairs to the porch foundations where the posts come down from that decking and actually bear on those foundations. So I think those are definitely worthwhile things to include for, for the longevity of the use here.
If I'm correct, the porch is, that would be also re-roofed as well. So if we don't do that and the porch pulls away, it'll rip the roof off with it.
Yes, the roof is definitely in the base bid for, for this porch. So we think it makes sense to include all these structural repairs too. The base bid does include anchoring the roof structure to the masonry building. So I think that would really handle most of the concern about it pulling away again, because it would be anchored. But I think it would be much easier now to do these floor and floor joist replacements and foundation repairs than to try and come back later, especially because a lot of the columns would need to, they would be in the way of redoing the flooring. And the columns are obviously holding up that roof, so it makes sense to do it all at once, I think.
Excellent. I appreciate you explaining that. Commissioners, any comments on this?
Good.
All right, reach out to the township folks here. Anybody have comments, questions? Pretty excited about it. They're jumping up and down again. How about in Zoom world? Without hesitation, entertain a motion to approve the.
Second.
All right, and we've already read that. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 It's five zero. This is money well spent. Thank you so much, Ross. Thank you.
Sure. Yep. And so for item number two, it actually, it somewhat relates to number one because the, our original scope was through a letter recommending award. So our second item here is proposing some additional services for construction contract administration and construction observation while the work on the roof is actually being done. So we were proposing those services and then the total of that was 39,730.
All right, this is overseeing the entire project, double checking with the contractor itself.
Yes, so we would be issuing all of the notice of award of contract, reviewing their agreements, bonds and those documents, getting the contracts all together, coordinate the signing of them by the township, distribute them to the contractor, review materials, submittals, answer contractor questions during construction, review their applications for payment. And then also we have on average, three site visits during the construction period, which we've assumed to be around eight weeks. So we would have an onsite presence for three days a week for that period when the work is being done. And, and then afterwards, a punch list and verifying completion of the punch list.
And if I understand correctly, even including this, we're still under our original budget.
By two or three hundred thousand dollars?
Easy, easy. Having Ross's eyes on it, I feel comfortable. So commissioners, any comments on this?
Ross, is there any kind of a timeline on how this could take shape?
Yes, definitely. So if we were to, you know, since you've already voted to award it, if we were to follow through on these services here, we would send that letter out like tomorrow or Monday or so. And then the contractor would have a week or two to send in all of those bonds and agreements. And then pretty quickly after that, we could set up a pre-construction meeting to review everything with them, issue the notice to proceed, and then that would start their timeframes for the contract times where we've given them 75 days so that they have a period of time for procuring materials and then to actually do the work. So I would imagine that it could get started basically, probably towards the end of August, they could be starting to do the work.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Chills. All right, I'll reach out here to the township folks. Anybody have any comments? They're still jumping up and down here. Anybody in Zoom? Right, that's it. Entertained a motion to approve change order number two.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Ross.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution. Don, our township manager, feel free to jump in on this.
Good evening, commissioners. Yes, this resolution, as you may recall, months ago or so, the board was willing to pass a resolution to support the Arley grant fund for safety improvements on Lincoln Highway. This is a similar requirement for the multimodal application that is due at the end of the month. I was working with Gilmore, Ross and Christian Norwood from that firm. They were able to assist in putting together a cost estimates. The total cost of the multimodal request would be similar to the Arley grant, about 1.5 million. It would go, it would supplement the work of the Arley grant. But just in case, and we're going to get approved for our, but just in case you do not receive the Arley grant, this does back some of the, some of the infrastructure necessary to install the lights for that, this grant as well. So it's really going at it in two different ways to hedge our bets, to make sure, you know, hopefully one, but definitely both, hopefully both of these grants are approved for a total of approximately 3 million dollars.
Sweet.
Could you say that number again?
Both grants are approximately 1.5 million dollars and combined total of 3 million in improvements for safety along Lincoln Highway.
I find that almost as exciting as the 11 foot mower. Actually, more exciting than the 11.
Can you just explain just briefly what, what these grants would do?
Of course. The, the Arley grant is focused primarily on the infrastructure necessary to install the lights and then provides some preliminary pedestrian and cyclist amenities along the shoulder of Lincoln Highway, especially in two areas of Lincoln Highway, limited lighting, that the crash data history, that the police department was able to put together, clearly demonstrate there's a concern. The multimodal builds upon that and provides additional street skate, more formal pedestrian safety. Also, it improves some intersection locations where we've been notified that there are some hazards specifically in the Wedgewood section where there is an eastbound separate bus stop requiring individuals to cross the street of Lincoln Highway in order to catch the bus. So this builds upon the Arley fund and expands on the safety provisions associated with Lincoln Highway improvements.
Safe to say we're dipping our toe in Vision Zero now?
This and along with the TC EI process that will be kicking off shortly with the regional planning commission and the county. It's definitely a focus towards a safer thoroughfare. And it's county and regional focus on improving Lincoln Highway and county township.
Thank you for all your hard work on this, chief. Thank you. For the crash death.
No other questions from commissioners? Anybody here in the township building? Comments, questions? None at this time? Zoom? Then I'll entertain a motion to authorize the township to submit the application for the 2024 multimodal transportation fund grant. So moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner. So moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Next on your agenda.
Have a couple of items on the agenda. The first is is a very difficult one. The, as everyone knows, the township had a difficult situation on the Ingleside Golf Course Golf Club earlier this week. They had animal abuse activity occurred on site. And before getting into the agenda, I didn't want to just, I know the police department staff, everyone involved with this responded incredibly professionally during a very difficult situation. Immediately upon receiving the notice that this had occurred, I had the opportunity to meet with the manager of Ingleside, Nicole Shannon, and we wanted to do something in order to demonstrate the support of the community and the support of Ingleside Golf Club. One of the suggestions that was presented was to donate some funds from tee times at the golf course in order to support the SPCA and the animal cruelty division of that organization. So that 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 this is being presented to the board as it's supporting that initiative. I know the Shannon did an amazing job this week under a lot of stress. I know the the chief. Incredibly impressed. We are truly, it's we're lucky to have the individuals that that are working and dedicated to Callan Township. There on Monday, they discovered someone had left seven young puppies that were seized on the golf course.
And it's still under investigation? Or our police force?
Is there a way, though, those of us who don't golf and get in on contributing through this same fund?
That was that was something that we discussed at that meeting since. And we can certainly put that opportunity upon the website link. Or if anyone is in the area and wants to go over, we can coordinate that, yes, of course.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
And I I think the gesture of offering five dollars per per tee time, it's it's not just about the money, it's about bringing the awareness of of what had occurred and the importance. Taking care of our our animals. I mean, animal cruelty is is no joke. I I think I think this gesture alone just will bring the attention and and hopefully make people aware that it's not tolerated here in this township or anywhere else. So Commissioners, any any other comments on this?
No.
Residents? Any comments? Anybody planning a tee time? Zoom world? It, I think it's an excellent idea. So entertain a motion to approve a donation of five dollars for every tee time on between July twenty fifth, which is today, through July twenty eighth.
Some of it.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, keep you updated on that initiative. The next item I have for consideration is a right to know policy for Callan Township. This is something that we discussed at several of the workshop meetings. New state guidance regarding anonymous right to knows have changed. There's been an increase in our right to know officer and can speak to that in more deep, more intimate detail. But there's been an increase with the new technology of being able to file multiple rights knows simultaneously. There are firms and companies that specialize in that. It's largely trying to research and access property information, ordinances, things of that sort, but it can be very time consuming, involve multiple departments, and it's a resource issue. The the Office of Open Records and the P-Sats, the Township Association released guidance on adding that we will not process anonymous right to knows. These are those done. Now, they'll they'll send out several thousand in a second to municipalities throughout the nation. We were going to just incorporate that language into our policy, but felt it would be good to update the policy as well. And again, following the guidance of the Office of Open Records and the State Township Association draft ordinance is before you policy. It's listed as discussion or action item. I I did receive confirmation from our solicitor. They had a chance to verify that changes that were made in here, notably the anonymous, which I discussed. Also, there's been some recent court decisions that the only two forms that are valid for specific right to know requests under the Office of Open Records right to know law are the official state right to know form and a township form. And that has been incorporated into policy as well, following that guidance.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
Yeah, I had a a question in the fees. You know, Abby is the right to know officer, but Abby has a lot of important duties. So if Abby's got to do a right to know that's a thousand pages, that's taking a lot of her time away. And what does that actually cost the township? It's more than twenty cents a page. So is there a way that we can put another administrative fee in there for anything over to over a hundred pages?
That's a really good question and one that's been brought forward numerous times since the the burden of proof in terms of what is public records shifted from the the individual requesting it to the municipality back in two thousand five, two thousand six. Through that, multiple policy hearings, Harrisburg, townships and boroughs have brought forward you know, cost estimates of what this does cost taxpayers locally for these large firms, especially requesting multiple requests. So far, the state Office of Open Records and the legislature have not granted that, to my knowledge. So we are largely bound to the set amount. There are it's it's been brought up previously, but that certainly is something I can keep an eye on. There's always conversations about this issue of being brought forward by the the Association of Townships and the state legislature.
Thank you.
Questions? Residents, here in the township building, any comments on this? Questions about it? None of this? If you can, just come on up to the mic.
Well, we can bring the mic to you.
Even better. And just state your name and address.
Charlotte Gibbs, one oh seven Foundry Street.
Welcome.
Charlotte. No, I I'm just not clear on the cost of what you're saying to do the pages and the time. So what is this information that the citizens are requesting? And there's a cost to produce that information to the citizens?
And that is a very good question. And this the 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 fees associated are most mostly set based on photocopies.
Yeah.
So if someone requests a thousand page document, which they have, if they want a paper copy, we would charge or can charge for the the cost of paper and toner and things of that sort. In most cases, though, there there's a box you can check on the form saying prefer an electronic copy. And in that situation, we do not charge. If someone comes in for one or two pages.
No, I wouldn't. I I can't think in seven years, I've maybe charged someone once and it was for hundreds of pages. Most people are happy with the like, would prefer an electronic copy, or they'll just come in and and review the information. We don't charge for either of those.
Any questions? Charge you for the paper.
Charge you for the call. They charge you for keeping your money.
No other comments from the residents here? How about in Zoom?
Abby, how many right to know requests do you generally have a week?
Some weeks we don't have any and some weeks I get ten. I think I was just looking, we're at fifty seven right now for the year. And this has been slow. So we used to get more in the past. Not a lot, but some.
Are they generally concerns or comment rights to know? Or I mean, what do people really ask?
It's across the board. It's a lot of property searches, people that are interested in buying a house, or they want to put up events or things like that have some issues. There's a few that we get every month for the same reports that are getting put into databases in Kentucky or Florida. But yeah, it's it's a broad range of things. Environmental studies, we get a lot of those. Those are big ones.
Thank you.
No further questions. Entertain a motion to approve County Township's right to know policy.
To move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Next on the agenda, this is the exciting part.
This is, yes, we're getting close.
Close.
So as was discussed in prior meetings, the decorative lights along Lincoln Highway, Thordale Village area, they did not include an electric outlet at the top. And in order to to install some of the decorations that the board is is interested in, electricity would help quite a bit. The cost to completely swap out the head units would be substantial. And these are new decorative lights and and it would be a significant cost. The the workaround that was suggested by the contractor is something that they've done in other areas where they're able to install, essentially install an outlet at the top of the pole and then tie into the electricity that's already running to power the 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 light. I was curious what that would look like because, you know, these these decorative lights do, they look very nice. And especially when you're drawing attention to them with decorations, we want to make sure it isn't obtrusive. So the photo that was provided demonstrates it is relatively small, would match the color of the of the pole. They'll be able to install for all the lights along Lincoln Highway in about two weeks. And really what I'm I'm bringing to the attention of the board is, is this, does this max what, would would this be something that you would allow on these these lights in order to provide electricity? And if so, I'll move forward with getting that, getting that in place. Each unit would cost around four hundred ninety three dollars each. So it's it's, but it's much cheaper than retrofitting the entire unit, of course. And the good news, and I I've requested the exact figures of what this would, the cost would be, and that would be presented hopefully by the workshop meeting in August. There there was some funds remaining in the the budget for the installation of the lights. So hopefully that cost would just fall into the cost of that project before it's closed out.
Wow.
So Don, how many of these actual receptacles will we have to put? Because some of the newer poles do have electrical receptacles on it, correct?
So if I can just chime in, when when we say all the decorative lights along Lincoln Highway, we mean all the ones that the township owns.
Okay.
So that that's a little bit of the difference. You're you're right, Commissioner. Some of the developments have come in and put decorative lights to match ours along Lincoln Highway. Some of those do have outlets, but they're not the ones that we're talking about.
It's the township. Do you know how many? Nineteen?
Nineteen? Let's start.
Nineteen. That's four ninety three.
Four ninety three per unit, yeah.
Okay.
Do we, do we have dimensions on this? I mean, is it about six inches tall or maybe larger?
It's the, it's similar to understanding it's similar to a unit that they're an outdoor unit with the, you would saw in your porch or in the pavilions at the park. So almost identical and it would just tie in.
And it would sit opposite of where our flags are now?
I would think that would be the best location, any type of decoration that we would install on the the poles with presumably have cords to plug in that could go around the back of them, of the pole. And when we're reviewing actual decorations, which is going to be the exciting part, we can make sure of that.
Candy canes.
Snowflakes.
We're all split.
Are we going to vote?
I don't know.
I got snowflakes, candy canes, wraparound.
Wraparound.
Under specific decoration.
Right.
We we will, because it is going to be a considerable cost, of course. And I know that's going to be a big decision. But we can have it on the agenda workshop meeting. We'll have all those options available once again and about, based on the time of year, I would like, there is some ordering restrictions in terms of shipping. So time is is, the time has come. So either at that first meeting in August or the end of August, that would recommend if this is something we'd like for this season, probably have to get a get in the queue.
I thought, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, we only have the one estimate. Do you think it's wise to get another estimate? Are we pretty much? This is kind of standard, you know, I don't want to waste any more time.
We we can certainly look around. We are under contract with this particular provider.
Okay.
So if we wanted to have one on this holiday season, this this probably would be the most only feasible option. But can ask to see if there's any alternative.
I mean, we're getting so many. I just didn't know if he was going.
I can ask.
And the the potential for having money left from the actual light replacement project to counteract some of this cost. This is the kind of investment the townships make when they want to become more safer, they want to draw more business in, they want people from other towns to come and have a reason to come. Let's go look at the beautiful lights on Lincoln Highway. And while we're here, let's go to one of those rest. Oh, that's right. We need restaurants. But, you know, it's, this is the stuff that
Yeah, I get it.
Just welcome to Callan.
Welcome to Callan. We're here. And
Long awaited.
It's a great idea.
All right, good discussion. I would definitely put it on the first meeting of August, start. We we need to pick what we want to hang.
Yeah, we'll set aside some time, back to date, yes.
This will be interesting. A lot of input from folks. Residents, come to our meeting. Tell us what you want to see.
Maybe they can vote on online or something.
Yeah, that would be nice.
To have the residents also see some of the light options and have them vote as well. Just have a deadline for their remarks and their input as well.
Tony wants his candy canes.
See how it goes. All right.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. That is all I have for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda, four minutes to approve, July eleventh. Any comments, changes, questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Moved.
Second.
A move by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes have been approved. Finance Department. Ms. Swan.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Not too much happening in the world right now of finance, other than we're still riding the wave of our interest income coming in. Probably around three hundred and twenty to three hundred and fifty thousand Probably around three hundred and twenty to three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, for the year in interest. So we're, we're doing some good investing and the market's holding. So we'll continue to do that. Keep an eye on that. Halfway through the year, we're still in great posi-, uh, position financially. We're about seventy-three percent total revenue collected. And sixty-two percent of our expected expenditures, um, are booked. Don't expect anything out of the ordinary. Uh, with that being said, we should end up again on a high note with our fund balance. The numbers are good and we hope to keep it that way. Uh, my report is in your packet. You know, if you have any questions.
Yeah, it's good.
Commissioners, any questions on that report? This time. Okay, we have a check around of, uh, fifty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-eight to fifty-two thousand, four hundred sixty-six with a manual check of three oh five. Any comments on the check round? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
They're moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Check round has been approved. Yeah. All right. Meat and potatoes time. The director reports will start off with the building and life safety.
Please to one question.
Sure.
Yes.
Go swing a good deal, Lisa, for the trade deadline. Get us a good reliever and they hand it back.
All right, Ray. All yours.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, you had my report. Uh, we stayed pretty busy with, uh, between permits, uh, rentals and code enforcement. I'll highlight a couple, uh, as you know, we have several active projects going on around the township. So I'll highlight a couple of those. Uh, two commercial renovations, um, are getting ready to take place. They do have approved plans. Thirty twenty-fives in road and thirty-one oh fives in road, one being the dentist office, uh, getting a major renovation to another dentist office. And then, uh, of course the daycare. So they finally do have a renovation permit and I would anticipate seeing activity there in the near future. Uh, Colonial Hyundai, I know it's been a little bit slow, appeared slow. It was actually out there early this morning. Uh, and you know, they're, they're actually making more progress than what it looks like. There, there's just, they are, the plus is they're bringing public water. Uh, public fire hydrant, fire protection water, uh, to that building and that building's getting sprinkled. The building's not required to be sprinkled. Based on the renovation that they did, um, but they're doing that because they want to do that. So there was a little bit of holdup with that, uh, to run that line. So, um, that's, that's actually a big plus. Our big residential projects, uh, my place, uh, they have eighteen apartment units rented and seven townhomes rented. And then the Willows have sixty-nine, uh, apartment units rented.
Yeah.
So that's, uh, that's the biggest thing. Obviously the, the Hills of Thorndale Woods project continues with the infrastructure. Uh, we should start seeing, uh, model building plans probably in the near future. Uh, and you'll probably start seeing some roads and sewer going in there in the near future. Uh, the biggest thing is, is emergency services. Uh, we did, we had about eighteen applications for the firefighter, uh, testing. Uh, eleven candidates met the requirements. So we did invite eleven candidates. That testing is, uh, this coming Tuesday. At the Public Safety Training Center. And then just like the police department, there'll be, you know, several things after that, depending on who passes. Uh, then they'll go through an oral interview, uh, and a background check, the whole nine yards. So we're still a little bit away, but we're, we're definitely taking the, the first steps. We did have to, we did lose two part-time firefighter staff, uh, due to non-participation. You know, their jobs change, uh, full-time's jobs changed. Unfortunately, that, that puts us down to including our fire marshals. That puts us to seven, seven people filling a hundred and eighty hours worth of shifts during the week. So it, it has been a struggle up until, um, June, we did not miss a shift so that, you know, all those hours were being covered. We did miss twelve hours of a shift and we coordinated with, uh, you know, with Chief Taylor on when that shift would be. So that we made sure we had some volunteer coverage anyway. So it, it's been good. I, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out, you know, Ryan Lewis is here. You know, he's our assistant fire marshal. He's been filling a lot of shifts. Um, so you know, he's really been stepping up to, to fill some of those. Uh, Handy Crafters, Handy Crafters actually reached out to us. They want us to be part of their emergency preparedness committee. Um, they're getting ready to redo their emergency plan. So they want us to sit on that committee. So that was, that was a pleasant thing to hear. Uh, from an EMS perspective, the multi-municipal group continues to meet, as does the subcommittee. Uh, and we're trying to figure out ways how, you know, six different municipalities cooperate to can, you know, get a good service and help fund that service. Uh, there are the biggest things. The, the one last thing that, you know, I'll probably report a little bit more on next month is I'd be again remiss if I didn't talk about the storm we had the, that other week. Um, that storm came in pretty quick. It was high winds, a, a lot of rain, um, came towards evening hours. And obviously every resident in Callan Township was without power. Uh, some unfortunately longer than others. We had two primarily affected, uh, areas, the longest, one being Parkside and one being Carver Court. Um, and that was due to the, the power, the way the power grid's set up. Um, there were so many people without power, you know, Pico concentrated on the critical facilities first. Uh, the nursing homes, the hospitals, uh, those places that didn't either have emergency generator backup. Or were completely on emergency, uh, generator backup to try to get that power grid back up. So there's, the, the county really wasn't up and running real quick to assist, uh, emergency services. You know, all, all branches of emergency services were out during the storm, uh, including Public Works. And then post-storm in the days to follow, trying to clean up and assure that people were, you know, getting the services they need. So, um, hopefully we have had some conversations, myself and the manager about trying to meet with Pico. We do know Pico has a program where they update their power infrastructure. Um, and it's very difficult to talk to Pico. So we're hoping we, we can make some inroads to that and find out what their plans are. See if we can, uh, start getting a pattern to maybe boost the potential to, for them to up, you know, upgrade our area sometime in the near future.
Cause we were very concerned. I mean, we were without power for four days. That's in these days and times, that's kind of unacceptable. You know, you have a lot of senior citizens, a lot of families with young children and four days, you know, and a lot of people don't have the opportunity and privilege to, you know, go to hotels or travel to other, um, places.
Yep.
I mean, and nobody came by that I know of to offer any assistance.
Well, and, and just to that, I mean, part, part of the issue is at least for the first couple of days, we were in the neighborhood. Uh, we were making sure that, you know, Pico at least was trying to come. Uh, we had issues with Pico. We had issues with Amtrak. Uh, so you, I mean, neither one of those areas in the municipality were forgotten. The problem was we weren't getting the, I shouldn't say the problem. We weren't necessarily getting the support from the county like we do on a widespread incident. Because they didn't ramp up as quick either. Because even though all of Chester County was affected, uh, the most affected overall was actually, uh, West County Township and like the West Bradford area. Um, so unfortunately a lot of the resources that were available went to there. But the county didn't, because the impact wasn't so widespread, the county really didn't have all the resources ramped up that, you know, that we sometimes see. Um, it was the first time that the township, uh, that we did open up a cooling center where people could come to get air conditioned because we do have generators. Um, and, uh, you know, charger devices. Part of the problem obviously is during those times, how, how do you get the word out?
How do you get the information?
You know.
Nobody really knew.
So we, we always take these incidents and try to figure out how we can improve that. Um, again, you know, those two areas were affected, you know, hopefully one of the things we did learn, maybe we need to go door to door next time. You know, so that those people specifically know.
Can I ask one last question? Is there an evacuation plan, you know, in Callan Township for areas? Because that was another concern that I was hearing throughout the neighborhood, like there was no way to evacuate.
Well, but, but again, we've had this conversation. There, there, there definitely was. Even though that underpass was closed, there's a way through the city. Uh, and I'll, I'll, I'll make a, a point that may come up later in, in the meeting, depending on who's here or maybe somebody online. But as you know, the underpass was closed for a couple, several days.
Yes.
That's because those trees were in the power lines. We couldn't touch. Um, we did, after a couple of days, when some of the other world got back to normal, the water company had a paving company start doing a paving project. Exactly. Well, part of, and this is why I say I was in the area. Part of my rounds got me down there when they first started. You know, I immediately called the water company. I immediately contacted Huggins. He immediately went down there. We shut them down so that they weren't impacting that area. So I, I, I know it's, it's difficult when you live in basically a cul-de-sac or a loop. And when one, one exit gets shut off, but there, there are plans in place. I mean, we could even if we had to, we could even make a way through Keans, through their rail yard, through their truck yard if we had to. But rest assured, we're, we didn't forget about it.
I mean, God forbid if somebody needed emergency service. I, I, I just couldn't even imagine what that would have looked like.
Yeah. Yeah. And like I said, I know it's scary, but we're, we, we definitely are on top of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do we have a comment here? Do we have a mic? Can we get her a mic?
There you go.
Or Foundry Street and the loop and trying to evacuate. The closed road, private road that in all the years I grew up. When they put that road there, it can get you out of Carver Court. And now you have a gate at the school and a gate at the front of the Carver Court where we used to enter. Why?
Why that was closed off?
Yes.
Uh, it's private property. It's not a public bird.
It was private property and it's still private property. That hasn't changed. But that was their permission for the school when they built the school. So the school acts to take over and they put a gate up on their end. Why?
Uh, the, the school put the gate up for security reasons, uh, which was their right to do because they put it up on their property line. The, yeah, the unfortunate, the unfortunate issue is that the property owner has made a decision to, to put the gate up. And it's, it's, it's private property. There's nothing we can do about that.
He let the school, he, the road was built because he was given the school permission so that they could drive the school buses.
And, and he still does. That's.
And he still does. So how can the school put up a gate only for their convenience?
Because they have, uh, a lease agreement with the property owner.
Right. But.
Only, only, only they have a lease agreement with the property owner.
I still don't understand that.
They could close.
Property, the same owner.
They could.
And his road.
They could close the road off if they wanted to.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Oh, it doesn't make sense to me. Don't get me wrong. It doesn't make sense to me. Don't get me wrong.
Well, which brings up another problem with that private road.
But before you go there, let me just assure you one thing. There, none of those gates would stop us from getting through there if we needed to. I'll assure you that.
Well, the school gate was shut down as well because of electrical power. So that gate was shut down for days. You couldn't get out.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, trust me, I don't disagree with you. All's again, I'll assure you is, and we've, we've definitely had these conversations with the school and the property owner. Those gates wouldn't stop emergency services from getting through. We, we have all the equipment to make sure that we can get them.
Well, the property owner, which I had to get a key so that I'd be able to get to the back of my house. And now I have a problem with that private road that is blocking the string that comes down off the school up in that area. That flows through there. I've talked with, uh, Mr. Huggins there. And I'd like to know when they're gonna drill through there because it's a blockage there because of the private road or whatever that tunnel is.
I, I think if you don't mind, we're gonna, we'll have that at the end. Or do you, it's up to you. We can have that conversation.
The public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah. Why don't we bring that up at the, uh, the public comment real quick? Just so we can get through the directors' reports.
We do have some respond, we do have some responses for you.
I, I don't want to respond.
Yeah, I can't promise that.
Any, any other comments for, uh, Ray?
Just, uh, one comment. I had brought up before that, um, I thought that we had, when we upgraded the traffic lights, we had included battery backups in them. Um, does anybody know whether they just work or not?
So, yeah, some of them work and some of them don't, and some of them never got upgraded.
Okay.
Um, what we did do, I mean, I could let Huggins speak to that, but what we did do was they, we did recognize that some newer intersections, we did not, uh, make sure we had generators. They do all have, they do all have the power to have generators plugged into them. So actually in this event, uh, they went out and bought generators. So every, uh, intersection is able to be ran on generator power.
I'm just thinking of when the power goes out immediately, the lights still work until.
Yeah.
Till somebody can get there to bring, cause it, all the traffic lights to have, we don't have enough people to go all at once to.
Yeah, I, we're, we're pretty sure that the ones that did have battery backup, they're probably toast at this point.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, we did have that conversation during the storm. We're really gonna have to take a look at it. And it'll probably take time because I know they're not cheap. Uh, but we do need to get a plan in place and budget for that.
Especially on, on thirty, you know, without, yeah, traffic lights there, it becomes a wild, wild west.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We did talk about, we're looking into some grant funding because it would be a sizable expense to get a more permanent fix for when the power goes out for a short time or a long time.
So. You have a hand raised, Cheryl? Well, why don't we have someone bring you, uh, the microphone? Don's doing, oh, well, thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah. If you have power to receive it, there was no way to get it.
They do. Part like us.
Mm-hmm.
That, well, yes and no. So that, that's a two-part answer. So if you're not signed up for Ready Cheska, then you're not going to get an alert if they do what's called like a reverse nine one one. Reverse nine one one typically will only go to a house phone. So if you're, if you're set up for Ready Cheska, which we have information in the lobby, then you would get some notice. However, I'll caution, as an example, in this particular incident, the watch officer, which is the county emergency management group, was not up until way into the incident. So that's what I mean. We didn't necessarily get all the support that we usually do. That you have to be signed up for Ready Cheska.
Cheska. Yeah.
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 Yep. I mean, good question. Um, again, unfortunately, when you have these pockets of storms and it really doesn't, uh, affect everybody. We don't get the county, doesn't have the staff to ramp up as quickly. They did, but it wasn't until way late, like the next day, late the next day. They, they can bring it online. They just don't always have the staff to bring it.
That's the problem.
Yep.
Thank you, Cheryl.
All the, I, I don't mean to belabor this, but it seems like early on in twenty twenty, uh, I think it was before COVID or maybe it was in first year of, uh, second January there, we were talking about working with Ready Cheska on an evacuation plan. And you know, maybe we need to spin that up again and come up with our own plan and way to hand, to work with, um, make sure that our, our residents in, uh, um, Carver Court and Parkside are looked out for here.
I mean, if the wind blow, we lose power.
Yeah.
I mean, that's ridiculous. It doesn't, it had to be a storm, you know?
And I think education is important.
Yeah.
Because when it happens, you're not thinking. But if, if you remember reading the township newsletter the month before, and it gave you an idea.
Yeah.
Maybe that's a help.
We just need to encourage people to sign up for Ready Cheska because then you'll get alerts, you know, um, maybe there's something we can do at like community day or any of these, the, um, parks and rec things. We can have Ready Cheska information out there. That it gets to the people where they are.
It's good. More information, the better.
I guess, in the car.
I guess, of course. We kept my phone charged. They run out to the car to charge your, our phone and get some heat and some light and run back in the house and.
I saw a lot of my neighbors, yeah, sitting in their cars, charging their.
Your phone.
When I drove through the township, what was it, eight o'clock or so, the only, uh, traffic light working was three forty and thirty. But as I drove up and down, slowly each traffic light started lighting up. So I assume you, you were getting the generators out at that point. But it was weird to see the whole place dark. All right, uh, Ray, thank you.
Yep.
A lot of information. Uh, community enhancement.
I can keep it short.
I love saying that. Damn.
Um, so I just updated all the communications numbers. We do, I mean, we do have eighty-eight hundred contacts in Ready Cheska. Um, so we're pretty good. Um, it's not everybody, but it's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll keep pushing it. We haven't done that in a while. Um, some new things and just to bring to your attention on the last page of my report, we talk about, um, this POWR meeting that we hosted. So we've been approached by a couple of different groups now to host, uh, trainings and workshops because they want to see our cool BMPs, uh, the Meadow Project and the Downspout Planners and the Rain Garden. And we're in a kind of a unique location because you can have a meeting and then everybody can walk around and do a little tour. So the first one of those was held on June fifteenth and that was for the Pennsylvania Organization for Watersheds and Rivers. And all of our Parks and Rec members got to come and take part in the, in the workshop as well, which was pretty valuable. The tour was very fun. A little updated Meadow picture for you there. And we have another one coming up in September, um, with the Chesapeake Bay Landscape Professionals. And that one's being, uh, hosted by the Penn State Extension Master Watershed Stewards, um, and Tuesday night, we had our first online part of that course. So it's, um, it's a BMP kind of primer and, um, getting into a little bit more nitty gritty about, uh, site locations, like for rain gardens, uh, how to design them, things like that. So it's, uh, six hours of online classes plus a few hours of homework and then, um, that, the in-person class. So there are people on this call from, there were about ninety people. Um, the instructor was in Virginia and then all the attendees were across the state of Pennsylvania. And, um, I thought I was losing my mind because I'm looking at the homework assignment and the example site that we're all looking at on Google Maps is two fifty-three Municipal Drive. And I was like, does it, does it know where I am? Um, it does not, but because the in, the in-person meeting is going to be here, that is the site. So we had eighty plus people around the state all inspecting, um, on Google Maps this property and trying to decide where the best place for a rain guard would be. So, um, they're excited to come in person and, and look around. And, uh, so that was, that was kind of fun. Um, but yeah, we're getting a lot of good attention for these things. So I wanted to point that out, but if anybody has any questions about any of the other great events and, uh, things we've been doing, just let me know.
How is the art in the park going?
You know, it's going really well. For the first year, um, I think we've averaged twenty-five people each time. So it's a two-hour time slot. Um, Liz has done an amazing job of planning. She's so organized and has these great projects planned out and all the, all the things she needs prepared for them and examples and, um, it's, people keep coming back. So there's a lot of return, uh, folks and then people that are just in the park wandering over and, um, it was a little light this past week because it was raining most of the time, but it was nice in the pavilion and we did some art and, um, you will be able to see the fruits of all of these, uh, events at Community Day. So part of her reason for doing this was to populate the Community Day art show that we started last year and only got a few entries. So this year we're gonna have tons of cool art to look at, um, because we've been keeping the ones that the kids want to, kids and adults want to exhibit at Community Day. That'll be fun. And right now they're actually on display at the Coatesville Library. So she's been taking them down there and Coatesville Library has a whole wall that says like, Callan Art in the Park, and then has all these fun art projects up. So it's going well.
Congratulations.
And I can't take any credit for this. It's all Liz. She's done a great job.
Questions for, uh, Abby?
No.
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you.
All right. Uh, we, you not see Nicole here? She's online? Let's bring up Nicole. We have Ingleside Golf Course. Welcome, Nicole.
Hi, Nicole. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. Awesome. How you doing tonight?
Unbelievable. How about you?
I'm okay. Um, June was great. Uh, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in revenue over thirty-one hundred rounds of golf. Um, though it was very, very hot, um, historic heat wave. So we scrambled quite a bit to keep the staff hydrated and our patrons hydrated. Um, but, uh, overall really good month. We had a lot of fun with, uh, with all the golfers out there that month. So, uh, this month's been good too, other than the storm. We lost, uh, several trees on the golf course. Um, which is sad, but we will, uh, work to replace them this fall. So that's, uh, really all I've got. Um, a pretty eventful few weeks, but we discussed that earlier.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Nicole? No. Nicole, thank you so much for everything that you're doing at that golf course. So every day is a different challenge.
Yeah, I'm happy to be there.
That is good to hear.
Glad you're there.
All right, uh, next on the agenda, Minquis Fire Company. I do not see, uh.
Yeah, uh, Matt Wagner's on.
Online?
Soon. Yep.
Okay. Matt, welcome.
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Looking good.
Uh, month of June, total dispatch calls was four hundred and eighty-seven. Uh, two hundred and fifty-four ALS dispatches, two hundred and thirty-three BLS dispatches. With a total transported patients of two hundred and ninety-eight. In the township of Callan, we had a hundred and sixty calls with a year-to-date of nine hundred and forty-six. Busiest day of the week was Friday, followed by Sunday and, uh, Monday. Hospital destinations, two hundred and three were transported to Chester County, ninety-three to Paoli, one to Chopluff King of Prussia and one to Reading Hospital. Top call types for the month was an ALS heart problems, BLS fall, ALS respiratory difficulty, and a BLS sick person. Recovered, uh, Euclid thirteen times, Westwood ten times, Washington Hoads eight times and Good Fellowship three times. Uh, we had four cardiac arrest dispatches for the month with two successfully resuscitated, the hospital discharged without neurological deficit. In our average call times, dispatch to and route is one point nine three minutes and route to on scene is seven point eight seven minutes. On scene to transport is sixteen point nine nine minutes. Transport to hospital is twenty point one one minutes and total call time is seventy-four point zero three minutes. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, I'm, I'm glad to see the, uh, VA is broken out and reduces the percentage for Cal Township's calls.
Yep, fully agree.
Ugeally. So.
Yeah, I think with County, including the VA, we're looking at, excuse me here. Yeah, the VA adds another two hundred and ninety-two calls to the township.
All right. Yeah.
New change, but, yeah, thank you so much for everything that you do for our township.
Absolutely. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Hey, Police Chief.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Um, so a couple of months ago, Vice President Young asked that I comment on milestones, which is category in every one of my reports. Last month I had none. Um, but this month, uh, we actually had five. Corporal Timothy Pollard, twenty-five years of service.
I know.
Milestones. Um, I have a service award to present to him. Unfortunately, he's been out for the last seven weeks, a, uh, non-work related condition. So.
Oh, goodness.
Looking to have him back. Um, well, we don't know. Uh, Corporal Jonathan Regan, sixteen years. Officers Hoads, Muk Bell and Norwood, um, all reached one year servicing. Officer Norwood, as you're aware, had been on military leave for four months. That leave was extended through the end of July. He came back this week and I'm told that he will be redeployed for eighteen months, beginning September sixth.
Yeah, that's tough.
Um, good news, Officers Chablonsky and Polig, uh, started first week of July, they were and Cadet, uh, Oxendine Costello began, uh, his academy training, uh, first week of July. So he'll graduate end of December. Service calls in general, uh, up seventeen point two percent year-to-date from the same six-month period a year ago. Despite that increase, self-initiated are also up thirty-seven point one percent. Their bank checks, park checks, things that the officers do on their own and time that they have, that they're not investigating. Um, not much more I can offer in the way of details regarding the horrific incident at Ingleside on Monday, um, that hasn't already been reported, uh, at the national level. This investigation will continue. We have people dedicated to it. And that will go on until we hopefully identify whoever's responsible, determine a motive, um, can bring some closure to this. Like every investigation, um, you know, we pull out all the stops, but, um, eventually that dries up. Uh, in a incident like this, we rely very heavily on tips from the public. So there's a new post on our Facebook page today, uh, that contains a toll-free number to the SPCA where people can report a tip anonymously. There's also an online form that the SPCA uses where, where someone could fill out and report a tip that way. And there are two ways that they could contact the police department and report a tip anonymously. We're hoping someone out there, uh, is aware of a pregnant pit bull or pit bull mix um, that may have had puppies about a month ago, three, four, four to six weeks ago.
Hmm.
Um, and those puppies are no longer there. So that would be very valuable information that would, would really help this investigation progress. If you have any questions, I I don't have anything to add.
Commissioners, comments?
I don't know how you do it.
It's just sad.
Well, unfortunately it goes with the territory, but yeah, it, um, it was a heartbreaking incident, to say the least.
This is where it, it's very helpful if residents can share link posts from the County Police Department. And I assume it's on our township website is, or, or Township Facebook. Yes, Cheryl? It, is it pertaining to this? Oh, okay, yeah.
When you say regulated, you mean as far as police services? It's under the, it's, it's Pennsylvania State Police. I mean, we still have jurisdiction on the thirty bypass, uh, but it's a state highway. So Pennsylvania State Police are responsible for all of this. Now, there's times where we're asked to come out and assist, but it's state police. Well, I mean, I, I see them out there frequently.
I see a lot of state police up and down.
Yeah, I mean, they, I, I see them out there utilizing radar fairly regularly. Unfortunately, Pennsylvania is the only state in the country where municipal police don't have the authority to use radar. So that kind of limits our traffic enforcement efforts when it comes to speed reduction. They're out there a lot. They, uh, yeah, I was, I was stationed. So when I, right out of the Pennsylvania State Police Academy, I was stationed in Chester County. So we spend a lot of time on thirty, two oh two, the major. Right. Well, sometimes they have a hard time getting where they want to go to because of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, Cheryl. I thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Public works, honey.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Mister Huggins.
Uh, not too much more, but, um, just a report that we wrapped up on Glen Ridge Project down there. Um, and a report, you know, kind of highlighted what we were doing down there and, um, uh, finished up there and our residents down there are happy, you know, getting all that work done. Um, did you have the? Yeah. So my assistant, uh, Michelle Adams put, Adam put together a little highlight just to show you guys with the new crew that we put together in the last two years, what we're up to doing this project. So just to let you guys see what they're about.
Got some background music?
This is a picture where, um, well, we couldn't get this lift here, so we called it down things and, and, um, and their big record come in and set the first inlet that we put in.
Wow.
Pretty exciting seeing that lift. This is, uh, one of the inlet boxes we put in with the pipe, uh, that we had to replace on the pipe down in that section that we're, we rested out. Uh, more pictures of, you know, guys that worked, hard at work doing what they do. And you know, I'm pretty proud of those guys because this is the new crew that been turned over in the last year or two. And, you know, them working together and communicating together and getting the job done safe. No one was hurt out there. I think everything went well. This is the new curb that we, you know, we had to take out the curb all along these people's, uh, property, um, this is part of, uh, forming it up and putting it down.
Hmm.
Guys hard at work. It's kind of stuff they were throwing out there and, and the heat kept them hydrated, you know, brought uh, Gatorades, you know, kept them.
Mm-hmm.
Finished product with the, uh, curb work they did. So that was about three hundred and fifty feet of curb they did.
Wow, something to be proud of there.
Uh, the new curb machine that we invested in this past year. I mean, not curb machines, black tongue machine.
Okay.
Putting down a new, uh, black. That's the guys working on it. I mean, it's the first time we used it and, um, I think it came out real well using it. So once we get out here on the road using it, I got a couple of projects there in the future that we're gonna be doing some patchwork and make the finished product a lot smoother. There's the finished product from, um, the trench that we did and, um, you know, got a couple of calls from the residents and they were appreciative of how we did the work and cleaned everything up for them. And that's the final view of what we did out there.
Beautiful.
Glen Ridge Drive. Oh, yeah. And then just to let you guys know what we're working on, um, it's not in the report, but next, next month it'd be in the report and if the residents want to know what's going on over in, um, municipal drive, we had a waterman break for the bathrooms and stuff like that. So right now, public virtual and, uh, to, uh, replace everything. So I did get a little, do a little homework to board and that came out real expensive. So some of the new guys said, hey, we can do this work. So. So calling back the, um, if you see in the report, you know, it's like a twelve thousand dollars if we'd have got it bored. And that wasn't even plugging it in, that was just putting a line through the parking lot, baseball fields.
Wow.
So we went and, uh, pour main, we got all the stuff that PA American Water we use and, um, cost two, uh, twenty six hundred dollars for material and a labor of our guys on it and a couple of rental of the machine, the trench and the stuff. So we kind of got rid of the trench because there was a lot of rock and stuff over there. So we used our backups and stuff, the stuff we had. It's going well. So I'd say we're seventy-five percent done. Uh, I'm looking at like in the next week to have the whole thing complete and get water back over there.
How long has it been out?
Yeah, it's about almost a month now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, one, I, I gotta thank you for the initiative to jump on that, save, saving the township at least ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Having another company do it if you can do it in-house and you have talented crew.
Yeah, got a lot of skilled guys now, so a lot of know-how. So young guys, older guys have been in the field for a long time and I think that works well.
Perfect. And, and the fact that you brought a video or a little, little PowerPoint presentation. I mean, thi- this is what it's about. You, you know, this is our township staff working for our residents out there. And that's a, that's a perfect example. I really appreciate it.
Did a great job on that.
Yeah.
If I may, the one, one thing that was.
Oh, oh.
Sorry to interrupt the applause. That what was mentioned is that not only would the project have been very expensive contract down, may have required disrupting the Little League field during the season.
Yeah.
So thinking outside the box and, you know, being creative about the project, not only get the water on a lot faster, cheaper, and without disrupting the season. So it was a, it, there's, it's a big success.
Very good.
Excuse me, Mr. Huggins, can I ask you a question? Do we have our own chipping machine here in the township or do we usually?
We have what?
Do we have our own chipping machine?
Yes, chippers.
Yes.
Yes.
Because I was just wondering what the storm, as widespread as it was throughout the, uh, township, is there any way we can help some of the residents that are really struggling to clean up their properties?
Yep, so this week, um, we're taking phone calls and we're letting the, uh, property owners get all their chip, and I mean, get all their branches and stuff out to the curb. And Monday, when we go and put the crew out there, go out and chip.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Excellent point. And we don't have to wait for another ride.
Because I know we don't generally do it until certain times.
Yeah, yeah, so stuff, stuff like this, you know, I started telling, um, Michelle, was to, uh, give us some time, let the, you know, I know people want it done now, I know people want it done now, but just to let the whole township get their stuff out, get, you know, get a list together and then we'll go out and just, uh, take care of it.
And that'll be on our website or how will they know?
Um, we did not put it on there, so people just call you to, uh, ask, but I mean, that's something we could do.
Yeah, okay.
Because I know you can't do the whole township in a day.
No, no, it's going to take some time.
You know how you have to do it by section, like this area Monday, another area. So that's why I'm saying, how will we communicate that so people don't have to?
Township was affected, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe the entire.
Yeah, no, it's, um,
Just certain areas?
Just to hit places where like, you know,
Okay.
County Street, um, over there, over, um, the other side of the tracks, I call it, over on the flats where they got over Eighteenth Avenue, they got hammered pretty hard over there. Um, up near the VA, they got hammered pretty hard, so.
Yeah, you know the areas where you need to go.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Johnny.
I'm sorry, could, this is getting a little loud out in the crowd, I'm sorry.
No, you were asking too much.
Yes.
All right, last but not least, learned to have a volunteer fire company. Patrick, welcome.
I've had tried, Pat.
I don't share the off my eye for two, eight, eight quarters. Last year.
Wow.
There's a lot of calls. A lot of discussions, very busy. Couple of questions. Comments. Oh, we saw the fire company. What should there's not a whole lot of?
Yeah.
Water and electric.
Yeah.
How to try and prioritize balls. Like any other. Prioritize the areas and affect the farm. So we spent a lot of time, uh, towards the VA area, Scott Drive, all that.
Oh, where?
It's not that we don't think there's an emergency. We'll assess it really quick. What does that? We got a big, uh, meeting out. Our big parties and it, uh, does question, question.
Six, six, only six. Coming close, coming.
Questions?
Thank you.
Patrick, thank you so much.
Thank you, Patrick.
What are, what are the hours for National Night Out?
Six to. Six to eight thirty.
Six to eight thirty?
Six to eight thirty.
Okay, yeah.
National Night Out.
All right, uh, before additional vision, uh, any comments, questions for our directors?
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
We're, we're clapping. Anybody in Zoom? Yes, Noel. Is there a note?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Noel.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, I, uh, would have put it in the chat, but I didn't. It looks like it must have been disabled, uh, disabled, I guess that's the word. Um, I just wanted to thank Don, Johnny, and Public Works crew. They, um, I met with Don briefly and mentioned something to him and they took care of it and I really appreciate it. And, you know, here's my little joke, worst thing I could see is a little paver machine, not a little, that paver machine, because I'd love to see it paving certain areas of the bumps that I had mentioned to Don. So Don knows what I'm talking about, just having a little fun and thank you, um, for the meeting.
And thank you, Noel.
Thank you.
You know what she's talking about. All right, no other questions for the directors? All right, moving on, additional business at this time. This time, public comment at this time. You want, you want to pass over the microphone? You did want to make a comment, right?
Charlotte, come on up.
Oh, are we doing Charlotte or?
We're gonna respond to it.
I'm Chris and, um,
Welcome, Chris.
On Seltzer Avenue in, uh, an area called Colonial Gardens. And I was just, I just wanted to know if there was any update on how the stormwater, uh, project is, is going, uh, if you want to call it a project. Um, as I know that they had taken some photos of the neighborhood and, um, just wondered if there was an update, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely good question. We literally had a meeting, uh, the last several days actually about that. So, uh, the preliminary assessment is completed. Um, so that entire project will have an interactive map, uh, which will be an internal work, working document that we identified all the, uh, what we call structures. So inlets, outfalls, basins, sways. Um, that was a pretty long project, obviously, to do that. Part of that was an initial evaluation of if they're working, um, you know, are they collapsed? Do they need cleaned out for additional evaluation? So all that information is now compiled. Uh, the map is, uh, populated. Now we're just waiting on that report and that report will kind of, uh, prioritize, help us prioritize which ones we should address first.
And determine, okay.
Yep, so we're hoping, um, that the engineer will have that document, uh, to present to the board and to the, it'll be a public document. Hopefully by the end of August.
Okay, so how would I find it out?
So it, well, if you pay attention to, if you come to the meetings or you pay attention to the meetings, but once we have all that, it'll definitely be posted on the website. The, the static, the static map will be picked, posted on the website and the actual report on the evaluation.
The end by the end.
We're hoping the end of August, yep. Yeah, we're hoping the end of August because we're going to use that to obviously work on budget for what, what we need a budget to do next year.
Right, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hey, Chris, uh, how bad is your backyard now?
It's, it's pretty bad, yeah. Like, I can't mow. I'm scared to death to take the tractor back there. So I go way around the biggest sinkhole. Um, and I have, um, I think you saw it when you brought some pallets that I got from somebody and I have pallets of so that no kids or animals, you know, be curious and, and fall in. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just doing the best I can to keep it marked. Because I'm, I'm just terrified that somebody's gonna be back there that shouldn't be back there and fall in. Because it wouldn't, wouldn't be pretty.
All right, thank you, Chris.
So my neighbor next door had a sinkhole right next door. Last week, y'all filled it in. Um,
Who, who filled it in?
Helen.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But now they're parking their car over top of it.
They're gonna suck your hands.
You know, I told her, I said, I don't know if I'd be doing that, you know? They have, and it just sits there because the man that owns the car unfortunately can't drive it anymore. Um, he lost.
Yeah. And, and sort of that's kind of, uh, what we're running into. So when we are filling out temporarily until we get.
That's temporary.
Yes, until we get those maps and everything.
Yeah, because I saw you did it, I thought, oh, that, the other ones that along there through the years have been with the backhoe and dump trucks and the stone and the rocks and, you know, the whole nine yards and that, you know, there was just two, two buckets. I thought that, that can't, that can't be.
So my goal is for Stormwater now to fix it completely, just like you seen up here where.
Yes, nice job.
Let's, we get together and once we get these maps out, you know,
Okay.
start making things safer and
Okay.
working like they're supposed to.
Okay, right, thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Charlotte? Get microphone there, I'm sorry.
Uh, the stones that's under that private road.
Yeah.
I just, I, I will, I do, yeah, I do want to, I, I did promise, I promised her that I would respond to that. So after a lot of searching, obviously the development's old, so it took us, uh, forever to find the, the development documents. Uh, myself, Mr. Huggins, actually the manager and Scott Gill reviewed those, uh, probably just, or was it just earlier this week or last week? Um, so we did find some of the documentation we were looking for. Unfortunately, we're, we still need additional because the documents we have only go to the road. So the next step is to find out who, because you gotta remember, before we do anything, we have to find out who owns ever, all, the whole park. So what we do know from those maps is the drainage comes up from Foundry Street, comes down behind, you know, there's an easement down behind the houses. We did find that, but it stops at the road. So well, now this, well, now the streams are separate, there's actually a drainage, there's drainage pipes. Uh, well, if you come in, if you come in, we'll show you. If you come into the township, if you come into the township building.
Come to the building. We're, I'm coming into Carver Court or?
Yeah, if you're coming into Carver Court, actually, if you, soon as you start coming into Carver Court, there's some inlets in the street. Do you know what I'm talking about?
And there's a drainage, might get a guard there.
Well, well, where you're starting, you're start, hold on, hold on, you're starting backwards. You're starting backwards. Start from the road, from Foundry Street, start on the road.
Seventh Avenue?
Nope, I mean Foundry Street.
In front of the Eggleston's property, there's four inlets, two on my side and two on opposite side. And that's where the stormwater starts.
Starts, that's correct.
There are four, there are four grates there.
And then it, and then it comes down behind the houses.
Right.
Comes down behind Commissioner Kennedy's house. And then it comes to that pipe that goes underneath Red Raider Way. Well, yeah, I, I got it, but we don't have anything to do with the stream. It's not the township's stream. Uh, if it's on your property, unfortunately, it is your stream.
Part of that stream belongs to seven and one oh five. I'd be glad to take responsibility. But that stream comes from a farm on that was up there many years ago. When I was a kid, it was a state over there.
Mm-hmm.
And that's over there. There you go now, where it comes up there, I have no clue. And where it goes after it comes down from here and down again, go under and drive the groove. It is back on my stream and so I had to show him where the stream was still running. And you can see it running. Stop it.
But, but, but I understand that, but I, I believe if we, if we do what we're trying to plan out, I believe it will alleviate some of that as well. Well, to open the pipe that's going underneath Red Raider Way. However, we have to find out who owns it. So, yeah, yeah. The, wow, no, two different things, two different things. Just because there's a pipe going under the road doesn't mean a person that owns the road owns the pipe. That unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. Now you can see, and I, I know it sounds complicated, now you can see why none of these things occur quickly.
Well, that's because there are people who have been there many years. And as I was telling you, and what has happened because it's blocked from going up that concrete road. Now, where it goes from there, I'm on, it goes down. But it's running and now it's blocked up, so.
Well, uh, and I just want to make sure you're, it's clear since we're all talking, I'm not promising to do anything with the stream.
But you can't stop it.
Well, you, you're, that's perfect, you said it, you're. Well, you you're, that's perfect. You said it. You're absolutely right. Right, right, right. That's what we're evaluating, yes. Probably, and I'm not joking, probably for quite a while yet. Because we can't just open it and hope it goes to where it's supposed to go.
Open it, you'll see where it's
I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way.
Charlotte, thank you so much. Ray, thank you.
All right.
All right. Any other comments? I know it's getting late, but you know, I don't mind sticking around. Yes.
And it's wonderful.
I like so much about what was going on.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Coming, Charlotte.
Charlotte actually traveled up here from Virginia. She she, yeah, she lives in Virginia. She and her family probably two, three generations have lived one oh seven, one oh five and just concerned, you know, as she should be. So like you said, if you guys are looking at it, that I'll trust that we'll try to do the best we can to remediate some of that problem. I mean, it's just, even when I lived there, you know, it's just like a big sinkhole there, you know, and it's just getting worse.
Nope. All right. All right, any other comments? Anyone on Zoom at this time? Well, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Needing adjourned. Thanks so much for an excellent